Seven o'clock and we have four. So I called the meeting of the planning board. So to kick off the agenda, we have two cents of minutes to not approve. The ones from. You have somebody packaged grace or did we?
I'm giving some of the.
To attract. I know, I just was wondering like the gate where do you have the dates?
March sixth. And April nine. I think March six for the ones that were missing, right? No, it couldn't be.
So he missed the meeting? No, was it March sixth?
Yeah, I listened one after that, I think.
March twentieth, Mary.
I think it was March twentieth you sent out.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at, nope, sorry, I'm looking at CPC. Sorry, wrong. It's time for me to quit.
So it was March twentieth, right?
What happened?
March twenty sixth.
March twenty sixth? I don't have my calendar with me, so. March twenty sixth, okay. So we did not. Paul sent the ones from March twenty sixth out? Did everyone have a chance to review those? Okay, any? Do I promote this report? Second, okay. Moved by Tommy, signed by Ken, any discussion? Hearing of discussion. I call for a vote. Tommy? Ken?
I.
Margaret?
I.
Paul?
I.
And me, I, okay? And as far as the meetings for our last minute, the minute our last meetings, which was April seventh, those also went up. Did everyone have a chance to review?
I reviewed, but I was not at the meeting.
Well, good.
If I can approve them.
Actually, you can, you can approve me that if you weren't at a meeting.
I liked the minutes.
Yeah.
They seem, they seem really nice.
Stay below.
I'll second that like.
Okay. So who? Who want to make the motions? You did, oh.
Motion to approve.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Tommy?
I.
Kent?
I.
Margaret?
Hi.
Paul?
I.
And Kathy?
Hi.
I like that pause before you vote. Adgravitas. Okay. Treasurers report, Mr. Treasurer?
Oh, well, what I saw in those minutes is there wasn't treasurer's report at the last meeting. So there was something left over from that, from Gannett, New England. It did all, it just said no treasures. No figure of proof.
I saw it.
So forget about that. But on this one, we have from DGT thirty-three fifty, that doesn't need to be approved. But you?
Oh, you said thirty-three fifty, I thought it was thirty dollars. Like I didn't have fifty cents, it was a first thirty minutes of work or fifty minutes of work.
That was further, obviously the preliminary submissions.
It helps just left in that account.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I think they, they, they moved a substantial deposit into that account, so.
Yes.
That'll carry over. I'm assuming they'll, they'll file a definitive within a reasonable amount of time. So that'll carry over to that process. But we can always, I discussed that bit, yeah, we can as well, and so we can discuss that with us later.
Planner's report.
I'll keep it brief, I mean, as long as talk about, we'll keep it brief. The, I did take off meeting with RKG, who's our consultant, who's working on the MBTA community, doing the economic feasibility analysis for the potential for including inclusionary zoning within the, any new MBTA zoning district of the town were proposed. Obviously, the, that process is ongoing because were the town to implement inclusionary zoning within that proposed district, that would, that whatever the inclusionary zoning threshold is, needs to be approved by the state. The state needs an approved economic feasibility analysis in order for them to approve that. So that's why we're going through that process. And so I got, I met with them to just identify the work that's been done thus far, a couple of the compliance models that CMRPC has done on our behalf and the basically just getting them, you know, GIS shaped bylaws and things like that, and to, to run their, their analyses. So that's basically it. So they're gonna take that information and run, and run with it, so they're gonna, they're gonna, you know, test, they're gonna work into their model, their analysis, basically a portion of the governor's landing site, which is within the, the general business district that runs along Route one forty. Basically, that strip of that district that basically spans the governor's landing project and I think a little bit beyond as well, I, I forget. It's just a target, a site for discussion purposes right now for them to review. And so we can put it on a future agenda or discuss it further if this board would like RKG to do another possible zoning district analyses as well, to provide when you're discussing where the MBTA community district should go. Oh, and the other thing I mentioned is Board of Health is meeting tomorrow, I believe it's at three thirty. On their agenda is Cobbler's Creek, Board of Health has had concerns with the septic design and the size of homes that's going in the Cobbler's Creek. So there's, you know, they want to talk to the developer about it because the septic was designed at a lower threshold. I'm at my depth, I don't typically do Title, Title V stuff in Board of Health, but the, 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 the community septic that was designed, was designed at a lower bedroom per unit threshold, the, under the understanding that it is a fifty-five plus community. And my understanding of that is that, is that a, you can get a community septic approved at a lower bedroom rate, gallons per day rate, whatever it is. If it is a fifty-five plus community, if it's not a fifty-five plus community, you're not eligible for that, you need to build a bigger system. And so they are just concerned with the size of the homes going in and the fact that it is a fifty-five plus community that got approved for that lower septic design, they have concerns about the septic potentially failing in years.
Well, they, come here, they proved, they approved that plan, correct?
Yeah, they did, yes, they sent through plan.
Plan hasn't changed in terms of room sizes since it was submitted, correct?
But there was, it is number of units of fifty-five plus, and if it's anything like the one up at Almato, those are huge houses.
But they still fifty-five plus.
Right.
But the Board of Health reviewed that plan with those units that size. And if there was a problem, wouldn't, shouldn't they have brought it up then?
They should, yeah.
What keeps it over fifty-five over time?
The deed restrictions. And the HOA, that's what I'd be worried about.
But you assume someone else occupies, like grandchildren, children will occupy those other things.
Right, which is why. You think about over fifty-five, you don't expect a thirty-six hundred square foot.
Yeah, I know.
You should. They're huge.
Obviously, that's just of interest to this board because I received a special permit for the, for senior housing, so figured I'd mention it. And that's it.
Alrighty. Next item on the, the agenda items. Okay, Paul, is this your last meeting?
Let's hope.
Okay, then I will dedicate this to you. The next item on the agenda is preliminary subdivision plan, conventional governor's landing, zero Milford Street. Do you want to introduce or should we just hand it over to Sean?
All right, is this, is this over to me?
Yes, we handed it over to you.
Good, good evening, everyone. Yes, we have submitted a preliminary subdivision plan for the governor's landing project site. It's the same one, you know, everybody has seen this, we've talked about it for years and years. I want to be very upfront and clear what the purpose of this is. We're merely using this to freeze the current zoning. This is something that Faford has done in numerous other towns, particularly once you have a project approved, a lot of moving parts, don't, you know, who's gonna do what type of thing. So they just want to secure their rights under the current zoning as the plan was approved. This is how the state of Massachusetts has told us to do it, basically. You file a subdivision plan in essence, and you get your, your zoning freeze for eight years. So that's, that's all that's happening here. But that being said, we have to meet all of the requirements and of the rules and regs. And so we'll, we'll be, we'll be doing that as we go through. If you like, I could just quickly go through the, the plan that we submitted. Where's my share?
Oh, Sean, the, the approved subdivision doesn't freeze the zoning?
Correct, so we have a special, we have a special permit.
Oh, it's a special permit, okay, yep, never mind, sorry.
Right, so the only way to actually freeze the zoning is subdivision. So governor's landing site, eighty-three plus acres on the west side of Milford Street, just south of town. We've all seen this, wetlands, Verna Pool in the middle, a lot of topography here, railroad tracks in the back. And please, I, I, there might be some new board members, I don't mean to go too fast. If you do need me to slow down, I just didn't want to use a lot of your time.
And Paul, the same old, same old, you've talked to us all before.
Okay.
Yes, there'll be someone.
So what, what we've submitted is a three lot subdivision. So we have lot one over here, which is approximately thirty acres. Lot two in the back here, off the cul-de-sac, which is about forty-six acres. And then lot three is about five acres on the north side of the property. All of the lots conform to your zoning, where your, your subdivision bylaws and zoning requirements, more than enough open space or upland area for each of the lots. We're showing connection to the future sewer and the water system that's currently under design. Hopefully, we'll begin construction soon. We're showing provision for stormwater, there's an area that we used at the governor's landing that we have test pits and can, can use that for stormwater. Fairly simple cul-de-sac road designs, about four hundred and ten feet. Again, all the slopes and curves meet the requirements of the subdivision rules and regs. So again, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but certainly want to answer any questions that you guys have and see how you want to, how we're gonna move forward here.
Now, you have waivers, would like, if this was just for a placeholder, you'd also need to request the waivers as placeholders as well. Or for instance, your lots are quite large, so they probably don't need you to set aside ten percent of the land for, for all the space for the subdivision.
Correct.
It's in there, it's in there, but you would have to question a waiver for that, correct?
Request.
Otherwise, we would say, you know, it doesn't, doesn't comply, and you wouldn't have your placeholder.
Yeah.
And what else would there be besides that? Your roadway, is there anything about the roadway that?
It's narrowing the sidewalk.
Nope, we have.
Would you be waving sidewalks on both sides or?
I think it's allowed, I think, I think it's allowed in the bylaw or in the, the regs with a, a road like this that you, or less than a certain number of lots, you can do it just on one side. I think that's what we're looking at on this one.
I was just saying, you know, just saying, whatever, whatever isn't according to the subdivision rules, you would have to ask for a waiver even at the preliminary stages, if you're gonna use it as a placeholder.
One section where the buffer.
Okay, we've, but.
So there were a number of things.
You know, I believe the other, other actions we could take are to take no action. I don't believe we even have to make a response on a preliminary, or we could say preliminary is approved, subject to no waivers, or something of that nature. Does that make sense?
Yep, yep. Or, you know, you, you could also, if you were inclined, if you needed peer review, I mean, intent is, and, and I guess the, the short answer to, to your points, Tom, is, you know, if we needed ten percent open space, we're gonna provide that. If we need to do the sidewalk on both sides, we're gonna provide that.
Because I, I like this plan of the three that I've seen.
We've seen more than three.
Three? You've seen a lot more than three.
I only went up a four.
Sean, I, I have a question, if this is frozen, there's been talk about MBTA communities being mapped onto a portion of the site, would that impact the ability to do that? And to put affordables into the MBTA communities? Would that preclude being able to do that?
I don't know the answer to that question as far as saying that currently this site can be developed without an inclusionary housing requirement under your current zoning. So if the zoning was frozen, that right would still be maintained with this property.
So basically, if we did decide to put, to look at the potential of increasing the density of this site under the MBTA communities, we could not. And now that would be, we, we could not require of any affordables, we could not require any affordable.
So Sean, I'll, I'll, I'll step in through the chair, you know, obviously, it's you know, we're, we're talking about two separate things, I don't mind answering this on behalf of my office, the the zoning freeze freezes the, freezes the current zoning as is today and would not preclude if, if, if this board recommended and town meeting adopted new zoning changes, whatever they are. And those changes affected this site after today. The owner and applicant would still have the ability to apply on, under whatever those new zoning rules offer. But they also maintain the ability by submitting this plan to operate under the rules under the bylaws today.
So they could do it. It, so it doesn't preclude that.
It does not.
Okay, okay. That was my only concern.
Yeah, I think you could do an either or, I don't think you can mix, mix and match. But you can kind of pick which, which zoning that you go forward with.
And you guys could decide that putting a certain amount of affordable, then there would be, okay. You guys could do, it, it, it ties our hands, it does not tie your hands.
Absolutely, yes, if, if we, if we wanted to come back and, and that, and that's kind of one of the reasons for, for wanting to freeze it, if, if we did want to come back to the town with something, some sort of change, amendment, it kind of takes the question of whether new zoning requirements come into effect. But if we chose to, if we had some reason or some incentive to, to do inclusionary housing, say, we could still do that.
Okay, okay. And just to memorialize this, something that's come up, is that you're still planning to move ahead with this, this is just business. And this doesn't indicate in any way that you're planning not to do anything on that site for eight years.
I want to be, yeah, absolutely clear about that. There is no current plan to, to change the governor's landing project that, that you folks have seen. And right now, the plan is to just move forward that, we've been, you know, working with Dennis and DPW and tying bond, coordinating the sewer and water project. So all, all intents are is to move forward as we've been discussing the last two years.
Board, have any questions, comments, or something? If you want to make a motion or do you just?
Just, yeah, I think we should, I don't know if we need to send this all around to have it reviewed.
They haven't.
The only thing would be what according to the rules and regulations, this doesn't follow, I mean, he says he thinks it's okay, but generally, we don't. We'll just go on that. We have it reviewed, I, I don't think we need to.
Where on the, on the property is this, I mean, the, the Hope Dale side has pretty steep slopes.
Oh, it goes straight up the road.
So it, so the entrance, it's, it's right where the main entrance of the, the governor's landing project is, Paul.
Yeah, so what's the road, I mean, is this road the same entrances?
Basically, except that, you know, in this plan, it'll be kind of more of a kind of a tunnel slope type of thing versus on the governor's landing project, we're kind of leveling that whole front more to bring it all even. So this would just be kind of cutting right through the rock up there.
Right, does the plan have a, a profile of the roadway, the, the slope of the roadway, I thought I saw one.
Yes. Oh, I, I didn't, I stopped my share, sorry.
Or at least we didn't say it's slow.
Yeah, so we have, this is Milford Street, so pitch down one percent, vertical curve up at four point nine percent, maximum five allowed, and then a vertical curve to the, the top of the cul-de-sac. And this is the existing rate up here.
I'm guessing you don't have side slopes though, all the way?
It's up, it's full of, not down.
Well, either up or down, you can't, did you have a greater than a four to one side slope, either side?
No, it, it would be four to one, it may even be a ledge cut, but we would make it four to one or, or less.
Well, ledge cuts require approval.
Got it.
And we, we can probably find some administrative way to, to take care of this without doesn't bind us at all.
Yeah, just so, and, and just to be clear about kind of the process here, so whenever the board takes whatever action on this preliminary plan, I think we have eight months to then file the definitive. So the, I mean, the, the zoning is currently frozen. And then we have the eight months to file the definitive, we have to actively pursue that and gain the approval of the definitive, then the, the eight-year lock starts.
Now, this is a forty-five day process, correct, the preliminary?
I'm not sure.
And then it's a ninety day for the definitive after you file?
Unless we agree to extensions.
Well, because you filed a preliminary, that cuts the planning boards require time to hear the subdivision on a definitive to ninety days, I believe.
Yeah, I think you're right, Tom. I can, I can check those times, but I think you're right.
I didn't know about the eight months that you had to submit.
But, but, but they didn't put in a subdivision, Tom, no subdivision associated with special.
I would, I would vote that next meeting, we discuss how we want to vote on this. Think about it for a couple of weeks and then we'll.
But Paul will be gone, I think we should do it tonight for Paul's sake.
No, I, I, I'm very comfortable with governor's landing outlasting me, so.
I'm hoping it doesn't outlast me.
We can talk about this next week.
Through the chair, did you want any comments from the audience that?
So what do you?
So you, what? It's not a public hearing.
So we're just, we just.
Well, I'm, I'm uncomfortable without having, saying that we approved it without a review. Because that, that approval would be subject to the road being disco to code and, and everything else. But the planning board can say that we have received it and we, we request to come back with a definitive. No waivers have been granted. It's just simply, yes, we received it, come back with a definitive, we haven't granted anyway. That doesn't, that's.
We don't have to approve.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We can just say we, you can go forward with your definitive without a yes or a no. And there's no waivers, it doesn't bind us, but it allows them to get their.
Yeah. That's close to you, Sean.
To be honest with you, I don't know by heart what your rules or regs, I thought there was some sort of approval that went through, I, I don't know what you often do with the, the preliminary.
It's been a while since we, well, like I say, that's what I wanted to wait the two weeks for, to see what our choices are.
Yeah, and, and, and if, if you want to, that's perfectly fine, and I, I think I'd probably prefer that. And I'm gonna consult with Jeff Roloffs and maybe even ask him if he could be at the next hearing as well to, to maybe shed some light on some of that stuff, or, or maybe put something in, in writing for me to, to share with you guys on kind of where all that stands.
So just the next. When is the next meeting, please?
I mean, May fourteen?
When's the, Tom? Maybe.
Tommy, it's elections, so.
Yes, so Tom, for, it's forty-five days of review period on preliminary plans. And so we, we'd be within that, but I would ask, I would ask Sean, as representative of the applicant tonight, to if we, if, if the next meeting goes beyond the forty-five days to allow the board the extension of, of that timeline?
Yes, absolutely, we, we would, we would certainly grant that.
I mean, again, Tom, to your point, I mean, the, through the chair, and a preliminary plan approval, I mean, it's, it, an approval doesn't guarantee an approval at the definitive stage, as you're well aware, so.
I thought we were only approving that it proceed to the next step.
Pretty much, yeah.
Wasn't quite sure how you were.
We'll discuss that in the next.
Failure of the boards to take action within the forty-five statutory review period is of no legal consequence. Right, so that's meaning we don't have to say, we, we, we just ignore it. We probably shouldn't do that.
This gives the new member that comes in a chance to start the next twenty years of their life on the project.
Okay. So the next item on the.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, did, did we officially continue to the fourteenth? I don't know if there needed to be a voter, I think.
Seven, ten?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Seven, ten on.
Seventeen, thank you.
Yeah. Great. Well, thank you all, we'll see you then, and Mr. Carey, if I don't see you again on these meetings, it's been a pleasure. I do think you've been a tremendous asset to the town and this board. Congratulations on a career on the public service.
Thank you, I appreciate it, but you thanking me means I must have given too much away, but.
You, you provide a, a calm sense of logic and reality to things, I think, which is a benefit.
Talk to his wife.
All right, take care all.
Oh, I told you, no.
The next thing on the agenda, I believe, is Ashland Chestnut Realty?
No, that's Ashland Chestnut Realty is in governor's landing.
That's what I thought, but then I'm like, no, it's three, okay, okay, the three lots, okay. Next thing on the agenda is signed Maylar plans.
Maylar's.
Broken services to. So the one that requires the.
I don't even think this is the first time.
No. Is it the third time you've done it?
I think actually there's a new thing on the agenda.
So we just do the top one, right?
No, I think you have to sign this one as well.
Of Marie.
The third time it's almost, really? Yeah, I think it's in consecutive.
Not any special. I always put my signature on order.
Second page.
I'm going to get that next.
Okay, so we just want to go over to discussion of Mayflower Drive.
Yeah, so the board all today should have received the report from DGT. Joe Lassano, DGT was able to get out to the site last week or the week before. He provided us with that report of the outstanding work on Mayflower Drive. He also provided a cost breakdown on what it would cost to bring that road up to town standards to make it a public road. I haven't had time to go through it in substantial detail, but obviously it looked like there was a lot lots to be completed. The quoted price for completion. Mario, you're looking at.
Seventy-six thousand.
That was the recommended bond amount.
Oh, that was the bond. Yeah, 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 sorry. Yeah.
So what was it again? Hundred, so a hundred or 120,000 roughly.
Actually, 121 if you're rounding off.
And that, that includes attempt consistency to make all those improvements. I did ask DGT today, I said, my only question about it was if DGT has any recommendations as to if the town were to call in the approximately $70,000 bond that we have for the site, what would be the best use of that? He said he would defer to our DPW as to how they would like to see that money spent to, to bring that close to performance, so. I looped in Dennis Westgate to just make him aware of the outstanding nature of that site. And so hopefully some feedback on that.
And did you have the developer about the 70,000? Are you going to reach out now?
I wanted to get this report first. And then, so that'll be the next order of businesses reaching out to the developer, providing him this report and discussing with him utilization of those bond funds to complete hopefully, you know, as much as we can with, with that, with that money on that report.
So after the bond, we'd be left with $50,000, that roughly, that we have to.
Without standing work.
Without standing work.
Is there any way to get this set by either safety or aesthetics? Something that would be a liability issue as opposed to a look nice?
Yeah, I was looking at that, like the three-lan trees, a slope granite curve, and I was thinking the same.
Is, is there a way of, if you don't have slope granite, if we put in the vitreous that we can install, maintain as a town? Would that lower the cost? And if you took out those kind of things, what's the actual cost of access, safe access? I'd be curious.
But that also, I mean, I don't think it becomes our responsibility, but what was represented to the residents of that street by the developer?
But if you've got a road, it's only going to get worse. Like the end of the cul-de-sac and the beginning of it, those are all things that would be priorities.
Yeah.
So it's going to be more money upon the.
Yeah. And I think, you know, letting the neighborhood know, this is, this is what we've heard. Needs to be done because they have been promised something.
And I did provide. Who, and I believe Jack Williams on.
I know the developer was not in the position of funding the whole thing.
Correct.
I see in the position of funding anything.
Well, I can certainly have that conversation with him. I don't know.
Who was in the position of funding? They weren't just planning to leave it to the town, were they?
Didn't do it. Said he doesn't have the money to do it.
And the bond wasn't big enough.
And one of the things. Hold back a lot.
Yeah.
With maybe if we held back one lot.
Yeah, and we didn't, so we didn't hear.
But it covers the cost that we don't cut with the bond.
Right. That makes sense. It was finishing everybody's projects. That gives sense. The street trees is the only thing I see. It's like aesthetic.
Well, the slope granite instead of.
There was also one for temporary, was it temporary erosion control? Is that still, right? Five thousand, still valid, things like that.
Well, I think that is actually probably needed because it's going to take out the customer's network and then.
Well, that's been open. The DPW says, yes, we have something for temporary erosion. It will be put in there. The permanent structures are. We should all leave.
Smoke in another room and continue.
She's crazy.
All right. And he, I think I'm the vice chair, so any other, anything else we want to talk about with this?
No, I think we need to hear from.
Do you want to?
W and Mike?
Yeah, do, I'll get DPW comments if any had a next meeting. Do you want DGT to come and discuss it?
Or phone in?
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
That makes it easier.
Yeah, and you'll talk to the developer. Maybe the developer should come too, because.
Is it Dan? Danny, Dan Haney?
Oh, Haney.
He said, no, I'm never coming back. Sorry. I'm sorry.
Don't, don't come back then.
Come back again.
Uh, but yeah, I'll, I'll reach out, I'll still reach out to the developer with this information. And like I said, get DPW comments and ask DGT to join us next time as well.
And why was, did you guys discuss potential litigation? That would be a decision for the town to make, whether it wants to remove costs, correct?
Or for the property owners, if they're not going to get the.
If you want to discuss that, I was confirmed with the town manager, we might have to go into a second session before we discuss anything relative to that.
But that might be as simple as we do what we can. We send them a bill for the rest of it. And then it becomes.
I'm looking town council into this discussion anyway, so.
Yeah, one, one thing, Mike, if, if, you know, just to bring up, I'm not sure what the town's claims are going to be beyond the bonds, but if we're doing this for the residents and the residents have claims against the developer, maybe we get an assignment of those claims so that we would be, you know, we would have legal standing to chase the developer. I did some search on you know, what other assets that entity has. I don't think I, there might be a lot or two out there, not in our town, but in neighboring towns, so town council.
We could do an incursion.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I'll mention that town council.
Anything else on this? Okay. Anything else on this? Are you Mr. DeGloria? You're not in charge. The package yard.
Okay. Um, so, associate member application, Mr. Gloria. Is glad you could come tonight. Glad you're interested.
Don't say anything that like turns these two gentlemen off.
You don't want to sit in?
So do you want to introduce yourself? And I mean, we did read your note you wrote about your interest and.
Thank you. Yeah, I was born, actually in Worcester, Nash here, many years ago. On my undergraduate degree in mechanical and aerospace engineering. Deep graduate studying, I MBA when I started working. And I spent essentially 40 years of my, of my life working with the government on the Navy's nuclear submarine program. So.
I used to watch some stuff out of the river when I was at Connecticut College.
This isn't as much fun as that.
I mean, I beg to differ. I served a number of years on the town of Waterford, planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
And it was. I'm sorry.
With one in the same planning zone.
Planning zone was commissioned, you had a zoning enforcement officer. And we had our power plant who did most of the, they did the hard work. But I mean, it's, it's, it's always an interesting commitment because you have to play no butts on the horizon for you. And there's always you know, something coming down the pipe that you didn't anticipate. And you know, the laws change, the regulations change, and you have to kind of keep a person on it. And so besides what I did for the government, you know, going and putting on the civil hat and listening to what was happening in surrounding town and what it's kind of interesting that when I moved here to Waterford, I mean, from Waterford to here to Upton four years ago, you know, the town's pretty similar. I mean, Waterford was a very quiet farming community down here in Southeast Connecticut. And, you know, the thought of change and the thought of, you know, making the town be anything other than quaint and and welcoming and, and all of that, that with that quaint one kind of touch was something that was on the forefront of the minds down there, people as well. So, you know, we kept that in mind as we you know, looked at our looked at our way over the horizon to see how the town was going to develop and make sure that we kept that atmosphere and also encourage, you know, obviously some growth to help the the tax base and broaden up the residents themselves, you know, so. So I went down that road for a number of years, you know, raised my family there, watched the road. And, you know, I think as all of you do, all of us, probably have some kind of inkling to you'll get involved in either some kind of community service or whether it's volunteering you know, be in some kind of civil situation like that, or Boy Scouts, or League Ball, whatever it is. So I guess I've always kind of had that instinct or inkling in me, so. By chance, I guess it was, I was on your website looking at things that I saw your opening for an associate member. And I was like, huh, I, I think I still have a few good years left to contribute to this. I think.
Well, I'm still on, even though I don't have any.
Well, yeah, well, it's.
Once in a while.
I think the fact that you just show up here and, and speak your mind is, says a lot for what you're.
It's mine, I know.
He's now away from his dog.
Um, well, I got two questions.
Okay.
Um, do we vote him in now? Do we have to wait two weeks?
Well, we we can lock the door and keep him in here.
Yeah.
What's the rules? Do we have to have a meeting and have it on the agenda or what's?
I was told it needs to be a joint meeting.
Oh, that's right. We've counted with the board to select them before.
Do they want to dial in to that meeting?
It can be either or, I was told. There's no strong preference, so.
But not now because it's, it's open meeting.
Um, so we could schedule two for them with scheduled time and then we could just have them phone in?
We could ask.
Or we could do it right for the town meetings.
Oh, okay. Whatever this board wants to do. I mean, they're, they're amenable to dialing into a planning board meeting. I said, whatever this board wants to do there, I was told the site board's amenable to dialing into a planning board meeting. You can do likewise to the site board.
We've done two separate meetings, haven't we? And it's just a joint vote.
We did one, two separate meetings, but one time we met with them.
Okay, I think Bill's first time was a joint and Bill's second time was separate.
Yeah.
When he was reappointed.
He was reappointed multiple times.
When is the next live?
And this is what we do. If you're seeing a typical meeting.
And Governor's Landings, we've been involved, we've, we've seen them since before I went gray.
Oh, my gosh.
They've, they've been around.
It's the plane that just keeps regenerating itself, is that what?
They came with a 60-unit subdivision. We denied it, but we posted, we filed it a day late. They still sent it one because we filed it.
But I was on conservation mission at the time. We didn't.
So as it turns out, they went to Thomas Fishness. Which made major changes.
Election Day, so it wouldn't be a seven, it would be the 21st. 21st.
I was seeing, I was in case, 120 unit senior housing. But because 120 triggered affordable units, they dropped it down to 100, which didn't. So then.
I'm sure it's 100 because they're putting. You want me to ask? I'll ask you. Yeah.
As long as we can get. Mostly where there's, but that all falls free. You've got to back up for three, $10 million lots.
My gosh, yeah, that's.
Tom, Tom likes getting sued. That's his goal in life.
You know, it's somewhat tough, I hate to say it, but it's somewhat tough to do because, you know, they you know, the more they lawyer up quite a bit, right? So they, and they come in pretty much fully on. And it falls on the shoulders of people like Mike and we used to have our zoning enforcement officer and all that, but you know, there are so many rules and rigs out there that they can sometimes catch it. And it's almost an uphill fight, I found. For the number of years I served there that you know, we had to kind of almost fight to defend the town, to protect ourselves from that, you know, that kind of situation. Because, you know, there are deadlines, there are stipulations, and they're snaggy if they can't.
It's the only one.
They'll put in their bad light.
Thirty times that I've been sued. It's, I think it's the only one.
It's going to be a record somewhere.
Question, sort of about the approach that the planning board should take. One of the things I found out when I joined the planning board is just, my opinion really doesn't matter because everything's tied up with, you know, the rules of the.
We just tell you it doesn't matter.
But one of the things that's happened is the state has become very aggressive.
Yes. I noticed.
Sort of approaching on the taxonomy of municipalities.
Right.
And there are two issues that, you know, actually more than that, but the sporting leagues, there's M B T A communities and now there's solar.
Right.
Energy.
Right.
And one of the things that's complicated, the liberations that we've had is do you take a proactive approach to ward off potential litigation by looking at bylaws that will make the state happen, like a solar bylaw that will expand where solar farms go.
Right.
Or do you basically say, no, we don't want to allow solar arrays throughout our community? I mean, do, where do you stand on that? Do you think we, or do you think if a a situation like, it depends what the situation is?
Well, you know, I you know, back when I was serving in Connecticut, some of the most, I guess, the aggressive stuff that used to come down to us is when getting into the areas of affordable housing. You know, I could say Waterford was pretty much a rural, very rural community and all that. And all of a sudden they came in and said, well, you know, I don't have to worry about that. You know, like I said, Waterford was pretty much a rural, very rural community and all that, and all of a sudden they came in and said, well, you know, I wasn't going to worry about that. You know, you're going to have a, a, a certain population or capability to house, you know, pe- people here, there and everywhere. And what I'll give the, uh, our chairman, uh, you know, a lot of, uh, credit for, and I think a lot of us had the same approach though as you. If you can see the, uh, if you can hear the locomotive coming down the tracks, you take the, or the preemptive action you can to protect yourself as quickly as possible. It's just like, I say, I think if somebody comes into your neighborhood, um, and I'll just throw this out there, and then he wants to put, um, kind of like a huge, so I'll use the solar thing, he wants to put a big solar phone in the back of his yacht. Well, if it's allowed, if nobody's kind of talked about this, but then he comes up and says, well, you know, the state of Massachusetts says that you can't, you know, you can't deny me, I don't care how ugly you think it looks next to your house. I mean, that, that could be an issue, but if the town protects itself, I think by looking at its options and tries to protect itself with language that either, um, makes whoever's coming in have to kind of go down a chute that you want them to go down. Like you say, put it, like, say on one forty, I know we're one forty. Uh, or the same thing with the affordable housing from the MBTA, I know there's a lot of communities, you know, and I'm sure you all read it, I mean, they're all pushing back because it is the government coming into their community and saying, I don't want you to do this. And for some towns, they don't have the tracks even coming near their home, you know, like ours, what, they come into grasp then, I think.
Yes, we, I think it's.
Yeah, but something that has a good eye on that hundreds of thousands of dollars that they're going to take away from.
Well, that's it.
If they don't submit to their strong object.
Well, that's it, I mean, and, and that's where you have to play the balancing game of, um, you know, where the pros and cons are going down the path. But I think if you just close a blind eye and try to play catch up, you know, it's like, yeah, I, I think you put yourself at great risk of pretty much never catching up, never catching up to the game. I think you have to kind of understand what the language is and what your chances are being out there to put yourself in a position of being able to at least dictate how it transpires into community, how it happens. Um, and even some of that could be language that puts you at odds with the, you know, with the so-called rules of the state, whoever it is, you know?
And, uh, the associate member is, uh, is to go on, on, uh, get involved in the special permits, just what we're talking about. Anything that requires a special permit, that's when we activate the associate member, they're not, they're not activated.
Playboard. Yes. Because of your.
Formations, the administrative work and subdivisions, we, we, we're not allowed to activate you, but is, is it just special permits or site plans as well?
Just.
Because we just, we have to get, you have to get two thirds of the vote, basically.
Four members.
Four members.
Four, uh, on the special permits, four vote and anything else is three.
Okay.
And so, but you have Scott Harrison Board and, and he.
And I'm always in, so that could.
So that's right.
Gets sick and misses a meeting.
Actually, Paul didn't know more than you perhaps.
But did that answer your question, I guess, I don't know, I view, I, I think you always, it always pays a dividends to be up and, to be up and try to be in front and try to tailor it so that, uh, it, I don't want to say it looks like you're being proactive, it looks, uh, you, you take the bull by the horns and you try to make them apply to your wishes basically, as much as you can.
To, to clarify what Tommy said, the only time you're actually activated is a special permit, but your, your viewpoint and discussion is very much appreciated all the time.
Maybe somebody at some.
You know, just to sort of follow up with what you're saying, um, that was one of the things that Margaret, um, you know, I think led the charge for, um, when we were talking about the solar arrays.
Yeah.
The one we put down meeting last time, then it went down. Um, I, I did, I did support it, Margaret did, but the reason was exactly what you said, we do a special permit where you put buffers in, where you put size in, where you put sort of locations in, where you put the area has to R B B C force, you can't square cut it. You know, you make it so it limits what, you know, so you, you do, you create your own, you comply.
You comply to it.
Yes, you comply.
Yeah.
Sure, tell them beside the associate member of the other doors. We wait on.
Well, wait till next time.
I hate to say this, but this associate member has a lot of ground on the issue. He, he cannot easily be fooled, the government's training him up.
So.
But I will do whatever I can to.
The bottom line, this ninety percent or so of this tax base is residential.
Yes, indeed.
So the things that we do to impact residential is the thing that gives the biggest impact on our tax base.
Sure, yeah. And, and being a part of that, I'm, I'm believing I'm a sensitive to that is.
But we miss all you're sitting around.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Question for folks, um, do we want to see if we can call a meeting together before the town meeting? Or do we want to wait until our next meeting to see if the selectmen want to?
Are there any special bits or anything that we need to get an associate run?
He's going to run.
Also for.
Yeah, we don't have anything.
Not the man.
She will show up to the fortune.
Whatever you like, we're looking forward to it. Okay, I'll agree with that for the majority, all yields of the majority.
You want to wait? That doesn't matter. Why don't you ask, I mean, we can. If we do it at the beginning of our next meeting, he's already on for the next meeting. Okay, so why do we do it at the beginning of our next meeting? Can you ask if the selectmen want to call it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll take it in different select.
Yeah, I can say one. I think we already scheduled something at seven oh five, but. It was seven ten, I think we told them seven ten. Ten is ten, obviously we do seven oh five. Does anyone have any question? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Are you going to town meeting on May second?
Sure.
They could go wash paint dry.
No, there, there are four zoning, um. Articles. Articles. You know, one is for.
Coming up.
One is for, um, inclusionary zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is a, um. A. Spot zoning for solar. It's not spot zoning. It's not spot zoning. It's, it's not a spot zoning. Overlay. Overlay district is. We are all like flat happy to.
We don't make overlays, uh, just overlay zones much, but this is for solar and it doesn't affect density, which doesn't affect your schools. So you can overlay a solar farm over, uh, existing property.
Okay.
But, uh. But you lose, you lose your rules and regs for that one originally zoned for, let's say it's a two acre zone, you lose that and now it's, the zone is the, um, solar.
But you can't build houses anyway.
So you lose, you lose the rights that you would have gotten there if you could exist in zone. But you overlay it and you can't have, or competing, just.
Yeah.
Rules.
But it's, it isn't, you know, it's a fifth whatever zoning bylaws say, um, in that it's for the good of the town because it's, I mean, it can't be used for anything else.
Yeah.
Um, so it can only be used for, it can't be used for housing. And it's secluded, it's in a bowl, so it's not visible. It's where they're, one of the.
Okay.
Piggies that can get electricity. What is that called, farming, the, the three phase? Three phase power, yes. Um, so, yeah, so it's, it's, it's a good space, so we have something, um, with, uh, wire, with wireless.
Really, that we do some, the, the, where the town barn is.
Yes.
That's a municipal zone.
Yeah.
Never had such a thing until they said we need a town burn, and it could only go on until we created a municipal zone, pretty much spot zone next to the school.
So there was.
Something different.
So there, there are the fourth, and then there's something that has to do with a small change in the downtown, uh, economic development district, just changing some names, so.
So how do you all differentiate, the, the zoning board does, uh, they do, I mean, I'm so used to having them combined.
So it should be pretty similar to, I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, it should be pretty similar to what Connecticut was, the Planning and Zoning Commission in Connecticut, mine is, um, you know, it's, it's, you do planning, essentially Planning Board matters, so you can, you can, um, uh, create zoning through that, yeah. This board, the planning board, doesn't necessarily create the zoning because it defers the town meeting to actually ratify it so that it goes into effect. But that, all that starts here and goes through.
And we can get the public hearings on those issues.
And we, we can't waive zoning, this board does not waive zoning.
Only the Z B A.
Only the Z B A.
Yes, same as in Connecticut, the, the zoning board, yeah.
Maybe I may think through subdivision control.
So, um, are you available, um, on the?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth to, for joint meeting of the selectmen and the, the, the planning board is meeting that. And we will ask the selectmen to call in at seven o'clock or seven oh five.
We should.
And, um, we can ask for a vote on your application. Are you being the subject number? Sure. Not until we re- reord. Until we reord, okay, I'll stop you.
Are, are we all going to disappear here come next month?
So, okay, um, so any other questions?
I will thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for volunteering.
Yeah, no, thank you for even accepting my, my.
Well, we have several other excellent candidates.
What are we doing? Hide the band?
Blues, yeah. Okay.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one more thing to throw out before we, um, end the meeting, the four, uh, uh, by law changes for the, uh, town meeting, um, who wants to present?
I'll do one of them.
I'd like to do the inclusionary.
Do you, um, do you want to just do the recommendation or do you want to present on it?
Oh, you could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was assuming I'd present.
No, I'm going to stand up there and ramble for an hour.
Generally, it's the, the town moderator asks the, uh, chairman for the vote. And then after that's done, any questions?
Somebody, but, but what she's saying is who's going to read the articles, who has to get up and make a motion. No, he can't make a motion, no. No, no, it's, it, the motion has to be read by.
Reading the motion.
Yeah, we. Last time Margaret did the solar.
Right.
Um, and then because you supported it. Right, and Paul did something else, I can't remember what he read last time. Yeah.
Doesn't the moderator read it first and then the person read it? It sounds that work.
No.
They introduce the, the article, introduce it.
Yeah.
You're going to go to more town meetings, stop it. Either do that or you're not really going, man.
They introduce the article, then they defer to the, a presentation on it, then there's discussion, then there's the motion.
Yeah, usually someone from the planning board gets up and reads the motion.
The sponsor of the article reads the article.
Yeah, and so it's just a matter of who on this board wants to read the articles.
My G G is selected.
And I would like to do inclusionary zoning, I think it's appropriate to use solar. Sure, all solar on. Um, and then, um, I can do the others, or if anyone else wants to do the others, it's fine. You know, it's.
Well, I'll, I'll just, I'll just, uh, uh, hand out the, the, the motions ahead of time anyways, everybody.
Yeah.
The big thing is going to be the follow-up questions, like last time, the follow-up questions, but we got in the mud. It, uh, was there one question on the solar remote?
Clearcutting, we really get it.
The clearcutting. Yeah, the clearcutting, you understand that? We're done with last, I don't.
This will be.
Okay, but when we said that you couldn't clearcut to do this, we meant you couldn't, oh, no, so we're not clearcut five years in advance.
And you're going to start with the note that you ended not sent me?
Mine that will forget fast. Paul, Paul was scarred for life by trying to run that here, that, that, uh, public hearing.
That was fun.
So, um, so, yeah, so, you know, with the follow-up questions, I just think we need to be prepared in each of the sections. I mean, one of the big things that I think we need to be prepared for is solar and, you know, the. I think the questions on solar will be very different. Take my flash, and I think that, you know, um, I did have a long talk with Brett, I'll share that with you about the concerns. Oh, you were not, I'm sorry. Um, I'll share, um, you know, I've talked to Michael about the answers to many of his questions, which we should get to the selectmen. Did they have a meeting before town meeting?
Another meeting, yeah, they're meeting tonight.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, let me know if they have a meeting before, because they, they, they asked them specific questions when they were meeting. And I'll share that.
Well, that, that was all there, the answers to those questions were all included in this board's recommendation of that article.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll arrange a, an appreciation night for Mr. Carey.
I think so.
Which, you know?
Yeah. Sounds good. Paul. Have a motion to adjourn. Paul needs to make the motion to adjourn.
Now, Mr. Bates is, is recognized behind you.
Oh.
Madam Chairwoman and, uh, planning board members, I have a question relevant to a previous submission. Um, very much aware of Governor's Landing. And the applicant submitted preliminary plan for what was called Oak, Oak. Gobblers, Moab.
Oak Consulting, that's the company.
Yeah. But I heard in the present, in the very beginning of the presentation, something about it preserving a special permit.
No, no, it, it preserves the current zoning. So the zoning can't be changed if there's an active subdivision or improved subdivision.
Right now it's sort of thousand residents, six, and along the roads, commercial enough, those are the two zones.
So the, the submission of this preliminary plan is basically a fail-safe.
Yes.
For the applicant to preserve what is already been, has, has Governor's Landing been approved?
Yes, and it, but if that was approved under a special permit, special permit does not, does not preserve the zoning, only a subdivision reserves.
That's really reserved that approval, so like, we're just. We're in the zoning to change, that approval still stands, they still build that, but not the zoning, yes.
When does the applicant's special permit period run out?
Two years.
And when, and when was the, uh, subdivision slash special permit approved?
Oh, when was that an aspect?
Did you hear?
Was it?
End of last year, this year.
Yeah.
End of last, end of last year.
Yeah.
So. It's been a little while since I've been involved in the game, but should the planning board deny the submitted preliminary plan, then the applicant is, still has to go forward within the timeline to preserve his special permit?
I think the question here is even if we, if it's within our review to do so, basically. It's a preliminary plan.
Just merely by submitting the preliminary plan to the board, they've, they've, uh, secured those rights. So just the act of just submitting the, the plan.
Like you deliver subpoena.
And, and, and if I may through Madam Chairwoman, should this planning board deny?
It doesn't change whether they, they've submitted the plan. It doesn't, yeah, we don't, things, we don't, yeah, it's not what we do.
Even though we denied it, we didn't say you can't come back in with a definitive, we just denied preliminary. But you still come back in with a definitive based on what we said you didn't.
Which would preserve the timeline under the special permit granted.
We didn't say you can never come back and see us ever again, we just said your preliminary is denied, when you come in with your definitive, you got to do what we said, still timelines.
So Tommy, we could have table discussion this till the next meeting, so we can talk about it more of it at the next meeting. Um, after, you know, so that gives everyone a chance to, to look at it. Um, so, okay, any other questions, Billy, you have anything, or?
No.
Jimmy, you have any other?
I'm also a thank you mention.
Okay.
I moved to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank Paul. Oh, second, by your second.
Second.
Well, Paul, I just want to drag this out for you, Paul.
Well, well done.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Everybody.
So you're bored, pardon.